Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday April 2018 School Committee Meeting. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the March 14th meeting. Make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 14th meeting. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now to approve the minutes from the FY19 budget hearing for March 14th. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the FY19 budget hearing meeting.
Second? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to recognize the choice of students.
Good evening, everyone. All right, I think the announcement of the con has been chosen by the fifth grade as April's student of the month. Owen Sidewalk and Con changes, he puts forth his best effort into everything he does. He has a great sense of humor, always entertaining his classmates and teachers with his witty personality and smile. Owen has acted in the school community, this winter he worked in some of the fifth grade peers to initiate successful co-drive for resettled refugees in Puerto Rico. Owen is also a peer leader outside of school, who likes to play with his dogs, enjoys playing golf on his lawn. He enjoys playing soccer for the time travel. Owen's dedication to his schoolwork, positive attitude, contributions to the school community, made him a great choice for April's student of the month. Congratulations, Owen.
Good job, Owen.
Good job, Owen, from you so much. The middle school there. Please to present to you our student of the month of grade six, Nick Wood Houston. Nick has made a significant and dramatic positive turn from the very beginning of the school year to the present, where he has been a model of strong work habits and positive attitude. Always respectful, responsible, participates positively in all of his classes, does his homework with accuracy and regularity, uses his time wisely for group work, shows leadership in the classroom, participates, works on the examples, and gives thought and insights on all topics. He is currently in the honor roll with all A's to B's, and is still a tremendous guy. Congratulations on your excellent drive to the middle school career.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nick. Any other questions?
Just want to thank you so much.
Sure. Nick, congratulations, that's awesome.
Thank you.
And great words, I'm just wondering what to say about you. You're a progressive this year, and you're knocking them dead right out of the gate here in the sixth grade, it's fantastic. I always like to talk to sixth graders about the change as far as making it to middle school. What's been the biggest change for you?
Well, in fifth grade, I felt like I wasn't doing very well, I wasn't very happy with my grades. So when sixth grade came around, I thought that I would try to make a change, and I was just slowly doing it. And then I started working really hard, and I just tried to become a way better student than I was last year.
That's awesome, that is great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What has been the thing that you've enjoyed most about sixth grade this year?
It's probably like you get a lot more freedom than you do in fifth grade, because you're in charge of everything. Like you're in charge of getting to class on time, and you're in charge of...
Keeping all your stuff organized, right?
Yeah.
Lots of different things to keep track of this year, isn't there?
Yeah.
What's been your favorite subject this year?
Probably math, because I really like doing it.
And Mr. Walker's okay, right?
Yeah.
Now, we know everybody gets a nickname, do you want to share yours?
My name is Weeze, because it's breakfast for champions.
Excellent. I really like it. Good luck with the rest of the year, congratulations on Nick.
Shout.
Yes. I'd love to give cut on that.
She's fast, dude.
We are very proud and want to recognize our high school student of the month, Ryan Tom. Ryan is a very strong student, always on task in class, works hard to constantly improve his writing. He's really taking command of his writing this year, just in time for his college application, which is a big rate. Consistently does his homework at a very high level, attentively offers a maturity and calmness that his teachers really appreciate. Very consistent, works well in groups, never distracts others, contributes positively to the classroom environment, supports his classmates and teammates at all times, and one of our rare students who's taken AP History for a second time, which is in the US and he's taking it in the world. And this shows his determination and desire to challenge himself. So Ryan, congratulations, I mean, hard to say.
Nice job. Congratulations, Nick.
Congratulations, Ryan.
So Ryan, we didn't say, but I'm assuming that you're going to start working on college applications in your junior?
Yes.
Okay, so have we started thinking you're going on college tours or looking anywhere yet?
Yeah, I've done a few college tours, I'm interested in like science colleges, like for, like for science.
Yes, what do you think you want to do?
Something chemistry related, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, very good.
Maybe you can do chemistry this year.
Yeah, how's that going?
It's going good.
Yeah, you liking it?
Yeah.
Great.
Difficult sometimes.
Chemistry's not easy.
Yes.
All right, and so aside of AP Chemistry, how's your new year been this year?
It's been pretty good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Anything in particular that stands out for you?
Not really, it's just I've been like trying really hard to get a grade this year.
And what's this about AP History, you're doing it again, or are you...
I took US history last year, and AP World history this year.
Okay, all right, so you like the history stuff as well?
Yes.
All right, very good. Anything else that you're involved with at school, with clubs or anything?
I don't, not really in that many pubs, not really. I am in National Honor Society.
Nice.
This year.
Good for you. You're a busy guy though, with all this schoolwork, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ryan, how many AP courses have you taken this year?
This year, I've taken two.
How much of your year, what's your plan?
I'm taking, I plan to take two next year, Bio and how about those?
You're a busy guy.
Heck, if you're a first year student, you may have to pay. If you get those three or fours on that, right? You need to get that four.
I'm just, I'm very impressed, very, very impressed with AP courses. You know, as, I'm sure you might ask some classmates that might wonder, why are you going to push yourself in AP class? Are you crazy, two of them? You know, one is more than enough, but why take so many AP classes? Why push yourself?
Just like to show colleges that I'm like, go try, and hopefully I can get like some money back like from colleges.
Your parents appreciate that.
Based on, based on what I'm hearing, you've got these brilliant merit scholarships from the great educating, that's great.
Nice job, Ryan. Congratulations.
Thank you. How are you doing here from the student bar?
The Barstee baseball team won against Amso today, fifteen to zero. The softball, the Barstee softball team won against Amso today as well, ten to three. The girls tennis lost to Spain against Puerto Rico, this game will be for sex, and they add home. The boys tennis lost against Puerto Rico yesterday, one to seven. And they lost, for the Barstee track team, they lost the track meet against Nager. The other day, it was a tribe game with Middleton, Flinrich played first in Javelin Forest, and John Lawrence played second in the form of the Rose. National Honor Society is planning their senior dinner, and it's going to be on May 20th. The prom dress boutique is open to get new dresses now by appointment. They collected around forty dresses still available.
The student council, the strength conference on May 4th, and the CD, uh, CC, the Smith-Candace Center of Work postings on the 24th. The Walk for Humor and the Senior Dinner are both on May 6th, and the Senior Dinner is for the American Girl. The National Art Artist Society, Shayna is on the 27th from six to eight. They've paid for students and twenty dollars to go to an else, and the girls' school are going to the sophomore class, and their induction will be sixteen by sixteen, and they'll have to be seventeen people. The interactive club, they're helping a program to dance on May 4th, and some of that money goes to kids. And they're also working on food for the number of, to make sure they're, they're working on that. Kryan has open mic parade on the 26th at six thirty, it's only from three to six to twelve. They had to cancel the last one because of snow, but they're doing three sets, thankfully, not as busy as they was. Emissions is five dollars per person, ten dollars per family. And it's ended, and they're also just planning their, their annual event for the end of the year. This afternoon, they presented out forms and made packages for sponsors, they looked for Jerry's for food, and they talked to Mike's and the Rock, but they haven't issued anything. Fish is planning a mental health awareness week, the 14th, mental health awareness month. Today, May is mental health awareness month, and we had a crucial talk about, and we mentioned about illness. We have, excuse me, we're across, we're talking with the Mental Health Awareness Organization to come speak on the 18th. The day we're considering the seniors, and they're still working on that. Thanks.
Next, I'd just like to acknowledge the camera approval for the high school students to be given some minutes. Now we'll move to the highlight on schools, which is, I'm sure, it's on the school reports.
All right. How many school committee members, hello, is this okay?
Yeah.
They say there's a microphone, it's like a place to stand. So Mr. Mahal asked me if I would kind of just give you an update about what we're doing in Mother Nature Edwards, in our PBIS program. This year, we set the planning committee, myself, we decided to try doing monthly themes about character traits to help students understand what some of the, like, what some of these words mean. Things like kindness and acceptance, responsibility, so that each theme has quotes that are said every month. You know, every, every day of the month, there's something that's said on the intercom. And then there's activities that go along with them, that teachers can do with the classroom, and often, there's a school activity, so with kindness, it was nice, because a couple of ladies in the reading program helped out, and students in all the classrooms were building kindness chains, which was just a nice visual. And every grade had a different color, and then they all came together in one of our assemblies, and you know, they hooked together this enormous chain. So the students could see a visual, so it's great. We just did acceptance and tolerance, which is very difficult. So we tried to teach the kids how to celebrate differences and look for similarities in people. So we did people, everybody in the, in the whole staff and staff and the students, they each got a person, and they had to, you know, make it their own person, and hung them all the way down the hallway in Major Edwards, so people can find their, their person. But it's, you know, just as a way, as a visual. So getting the students to be able to learn, you know, what, what all these different words mean. And another thing that we're doing, the peer leaders, which Owen is one of the peer leaders over at Major Edwards, which is wonderful, they are putting on some skits this coming Friday at a PBIS assembly that they're very excited about. Sixteen students, they're putting on four different skits to teach responsibility and friendship, and I know Jen is, I know Matthew, her son is one of the peer leaders. But it, it, the kids learn from each other, and they would rather see their peers and the older students doing skits than myself or any of the teachers up there talking, you know. So they're excited about that, and so, you know, just to pass the messages along about what we're trying to teach them in our PBIS program, just to make it a, you know, safe, nice, accepting school, which it is. When you walk in Major Edwards, you feel that like something. That's it. Do you have any questions? Go ahead.
Very nice job, I just want to mention, no, I can get positive for us, right? The middle school got much recognition for their PBIS program several, over several years, and when did we, I didn't realize that we started PBS, the PBIS, in the middle elementary school. How long ago was that?
It was there before I started this.
I think it was a little bit later.
I'm on, I'm on my...
Oh, is it that long ago? Because I, I know the middle school got a lot of recognition for the PBIS programs, but I never heard of that much recognition in the elementary level since then.
And it might have started with middle school, and then it went down to elementary?
You know...
No, I think, I think it started...
Or did it go the other way around?
I'm just curious.
Then they went up to middle?
Elementary-ish, and that maybe as well formed as it is now. And it's built across, and it was very strong across here for, you know, a while, and then it's, it's been in many different phases in the elementary school.
Yes, it also helps. It also helps that Becky Spencer is a guru and a trainer of the PBIS trainers.
So I think, yeah, I'm going to tell you, when I got hired here, one of my first things I did as a, not even a superintendent yet, but just as the person who was appointed, and I hadn't really come on board that, was to go to a state recognition for West Boylston Public Schools, who were being recognized at an event for their PBIS work. But, and I want to say...
I think that was a middle school, but right, specifically?
It was, it was all of it, no, it was all of it. Yeah, but the thing I want to say about it is, and I would like to give kudos to Tracy and Rich and the team at Major, and all of, all of the folks at Major Edwards. I think since then, since that state recognition, it has been ramped up so beautifully. And I, I mean, if you go to Major Edwards, the next time you go there, I want you to look for a big poster that says, "Respect, Responsibility, Participation," because you'll find them everywhere. And Tracy and teachers teach kids how to be respectful in every situation. So in the hallway, you know, when you're walking up the stairs, when you're going to the library, what does it look like to be respectful, responsible, participate? When you, the one that I love, what, how, you know what I'm going to say? How are you respectful, responsible, and how do you participate when you go into the bathroom? So it has things on it, like, please wash your hands, because that's participating and helping us to stay healthy. And I've heard Tracy doing these lessons, they're just a joy to listen to, because it's just such a good message. But I would say, since that state recognition, we have not let up. It's, it's been actually even elevated further by the teaching that happens, by the middle and high school that do the same kind of teaching, we have the posters here too. And I just think they do a fabulous job, and you know, Tracy really does a fabulous job. And I think she's underselling the events, because they're a major... They are a major focus at the elementary school, and we get a lot of positive feedback from people who participate, so.
I just love the fact that you do it, because, you know, school is always about academics and MCAS and all these other things, but that's real life stuff. I mean, teaching kids just basic responsibility and, and I wish they would do even more of that in the high school level, not just on PBS, but like teaching kids about their checkbooks and, you know, things that are real life things that you have to deal with every day. And a lot of kids come out of school and are trained that way. But I'm looking at the elementary side of that.
We're not going to check with C I.
Yeah.
But we still pay.
I love that, guys, that was a great thing.
So thank you for your question. You done it? I'm good? Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Any community input? Next to approve the, we got a couple warrants. First is the April 2nd to April 16th, Payables warrant, we got a motion to approve those two.
Make a motion to approve the Payables warrant dated April 2nd, 2018, and April 16th, 2018.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, the payroll warrants, March 23rd and April 6th.
Make a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated March 23rd, 2018, and April 6th, 2018.
Take a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we'll move on to subcommittee reports, which is tied with legislator. Our report from Mr. Padone and I, Dr. Schopper shared with us at our legislative meeting tonight that a particular bill, I didn't call it a bill, I guess, is going to go in from Hannah King, who's a Shrewsbury representative. And this particular bill deals with non-resident pupil busing, which relates to, it's right in our wheelhouse with guys to the vocational school. That if you have, we have charged the kids in school here, that we'll be able to charge the kids that get bused to vocational school. This, you know, it's really a community issue that we all face. For years now, we're paying for all the vocational for free, and you hear this from the, from other parents, but why are they getting charged? Well, this bill will solve that problem, that'll allow us to do it. I, I'm a big supporter of this, because I think it's all in fairness. We have to be fair in regards to our home students getting charged, why would we give them free ride to vocationals? So, all right. That's, I, I would actually like to take one step further, I think to make a motion, if possible, to the chair, to have our superintendent write a letter of endorsement to our representative on this bill. You got a second? Second. Any further discussion?
So I have a question on how this works with respect to, isn't there, isn't that kind of considered like a regional busing? And regional districts don't pay bus fees, so like Wachusett, those kids don't pay bus fees. So how are they going to make this work with respect to ASABET?
So that's the, the language of the bill, and if you read through it...
You actually read through it?
Yep. So it's actually specific to districts that pay non-resident pupil tuition for students, and most of those would be students who go to vocational schools.
Right.
The, the intention here is that if a school district collects a bus fee from its other students, this bill would allow them to collect a bus fee for the non-resident students that are in their town, also.
And it'd be the same amount.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Can we have our PIBAG athletic fees on this?
I was looking for this thing.
Just flower, well, we're talking about it.
Just, just a little, like, so this is part of the chapter twenty, chapter seventy-four section of the law, which is what deals directly with vocational schools.
That's correct. And I think, what do we pay, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars was my question? Sixty-five? Four for next year? Because we only need one bus instead of two. So just so people are aware, our transportation cost for ASABET this past year was over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
And it would, this wouldn't be, the bus fee would be for students who went to any vocational school, you'd be able to charge a bus fee, and it would not come close to covering the costs of the bus.
Right.
It would be a small amount.
It's just not, it's a guy.
And I think it, honestly, in fairness to the people who have to pay the bus fee to send their children to school in West Boylston, kind of like athletic fees, they should all be charged the same. But we'll start with the bus fee.
One question, I didn't think about while we're in the legislative meeting. Our arrangement with Lemonster, it's a different language than a tuition.
But they're still non-resident pupils, so that's a fine.
I know it's a little bit different, it's a partnership versus a tuition, so I was wondering if that reflected?
Yeah, so I still sign the non-resident pupil tuition form for every child going to and out of district vocational.
So it's the same?
Yes, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is the budget tackle, can I talk to you? So we met to discuss the budget, basically it was a follow-up from the presentation from last month. And tonight, we're looking to approve the budget of the town appropriation of twelve million, forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, and a total budget of thirteen million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So basically, I have that motion for GM on that, to approve the FY19 budget as presented with the town appropriation of twelve million, forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars, and a total school budget of thirteen thousand, thirteen million, two hundred and sixty-four, that was one hundred and twenty-six dollars. So motion. Thank you. Any discussion? That's what you can say, sir.
I was, I was just going to point out that this is, you're actually approving a number that's lower than the number I presented at our public hearing, and that the new number comes to you, because I've had discussions with the town manager, and at this point in time, we believe this is a number that can be confirmed until the May town meeting. Now we have a few months. So there might be a need at some point in time to come back to you with another number, but for right now, we think this is a good number.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we can move on to communications and reports, Mr. Mahal.
The mayor of the government of the PBIS schedule this year, combining lunches at the older grade levels and separating the lunches at the younger grade levels, the books are decreasing, some recess time. I did send a survey to staff in the September to gauge their perception to changes, and at that point, they were overwhelmingly positive, and I followed up a week or two ago to assess whether we need to revamp what's coming here, and the responses were generally overwhelmingly positive toward the schedule changes, so we do not proceed making any moves to the master schedule for next year. MCAS is underway, and after doing a tablet test for several years, it really is, the kids are totally at ease with it, but it's pretty much a flawless process at this point. The network is working very well, Erica Pancks has done a wonderful job setting everything up, remembering this program organizing the exams, it's gone very well. The kids have worked hard, has not been a single issue with the technology required, but the work with the navigation, so that's been a nice change.
Lot less paperwork for you guys.
Yes, third grade's still doing paper and pencil, but now we have, you know, six bins instead of twenty-seven or whatever. But it's, yeah, it's much easier.
Much easier, so.
Thank you.
My name is Anthony Higby. We started our fourth quarter. Students received their report files on this past Friday, and students are moving to a new semester now. As we begin the process with high school guidance and middle school guidance team scheduling, students are going to go to school fall, so based on the number of classes that students have selected and signed up for, and we decide on the sections of each math, science, social studies, you know, English class to run, make sure we have the appropriate number of staff that are teaching those, and we hope to wrap up that scheduling process by the class day of school, so that the students can, you know, what this case is, we'll press for the fall. As Mr. Mahal indicated, this is also in the MCAS week for grades six and seventh. We have successfully completed three days of testing. Student attendance has been excellent, technology has been, has been very good. We'll wrap up the seventh grade EOLAs tomorrow, and we get back from the eighth grade break, and we started with the eighth grade EOL, then off the bridge, we do their math, and eighth grade will finish right there with their science, technology, and engineering. I would say, if you look back at the history of the online testing, we were very smart to do the year of puck online testing, we worked out some of the kinks, we made sure we had the right number of devices, we had the network, the bandwidth. The teachers by now, they feel that this is second nature, it's their third year of doing the online testing, and it is very, very positively received, and the kids are doing a great job. And it is very, very positively received. The kids are doing a great job. So very proud of them. Grade ten high school completed their long competition. MCAS this past week as well. At the end of the month, they will resume their MCAS testing with their man. Grade nine is preparing for their trip to Washington DC, which is from May first to the fourth. At this point, the kids have all chosen their roommates. They've been put into hotel rooms and bus groups. Shat rooms are all signed up. The school nurse is vetting all the medications. And the students, we, we're very excited about the trip. It's coming up literally right after the occasion. Our high school student leaders are putting the final touches on their prom. They just had a spring flame dance where they hosted a hundred and fifty students. And they basically ran their own dance. They got their own DJ, Hannah Khan, who's been such a tremendous leader. And the money they raised is knocking another twenty dollars off the price of the prom tickets for each kid. So things are really coming together and the juniors and seniors are doing a great job with that. I wanted to just give a shout out to the middle school students that were involved in the Allison Wonderland play. Andy Boer, the producer, Chris Minsky, Mrs. Green, the mini charity volunteers who work with the students. Did an outstanding job. It was, it was a lot of fun. And I look forward to the high school musical, which is coming up on May eleventh and twelfth. Lots of good theater and drama, work being done throughout the school. And despite the early season records of track and tennis and softball, baseball, they only had one for two games. We will, we will gain some victories in the future, I'm sure. But most importantly, the kids are up there with really good coaches, being well-oversupervised, learning fundamentals, playing the game the right way, representing the school and community, together, so we're very excited for the start of the fourth season.
Mr. Trainer?
No. I'm gonna sit for the Friday. I'm part of it the two days. It's a little overloaded.
I'm not gonna give Mr. Parker other time.
I just, yeah.
We have four minutes. This is a good break.
One housekeeping item to go over. You voted the budget, okay? You voted the total budget of the old appropriation that we had, my fault. On the listing that we have, two, excuse me, thirteen million two sixty-four one twenty-six. That is the old amount. The new amount is thirteen million. The town's appropriation stays the same.
Yep.
That's okay. So you probably have to amend your budget that you voted for thirteen million two sixty-five one twenty-six and approve and bring another motion forward to approve that thirteen million one five four nine four seven. Should probably use different colors.
No, we should do the same. We should do the same as we had in the circuit, right?
Correct.
It should say the same. They voted the right number. They voted the right number. They voted the right number. I'm sure of it.
That's correct. You're right on that.
Yeah. Don't go anywhere.
That's okay. Just wanna make sure we get the right number.
We did. We do have the right number.
Yep.
We got three sheets here, two, actually, we got four sheets here. With the switch around.
Need to change the colors on each one.
You're good.
That's the one that I have voted. It should be thirteen million two sixty-four one twenty-six.
That's what we voted.
I apologize.
No problem.
We will go on from there. We do need to vote though on the project that we're working on downstairs in the weight room to declare the equipment that we have down there obsolete and unusable in accordance with our policies that we have in our policy. I believe some of you viewed that this evening and so forth and so on. And we will be asked for, asked to make a motion and, and a vote to properly dispose of the equipment that we have that is considered obsolete in accordance with that policy under the superintendent's regulations.
I'll make a motion to declare the equipment obsolete under the policy and allow the superintendent to dispose of it in the most effective way.
The superintendent is the one that's, her name is in here.
Oh, okay.
Take a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Schapp, in the past, under similar circumstances, how do you go about?
I had to ask Roger. So if you can talk about how you're gonna do that.
What happens is a bunch of policies, avenues you can take depending on the value, okay? If it's valuable, okay, what we would do is we would take, advertise it and take sealed bids on it. Okay, so we would give away that control. We would figure that was, you know, we advertise and take sealed bids on general bid opening, you know, and award to higher bidder, okay? In the case with the, with the equipment downstairs, because of the nature of so many weights and this and that and so forth and so on, we're going to end up probably scrapping into a metal person and get money for that. Okay, that's the easiest and most efficient way to get rid of all that noise and so forth. Normally, the policy would be to take sealed bids. Or put it up for, what happens to the town on one Saturday? Usually, if people, many has a disposable, discarded equipment, okay, where people can come in and buy things at the, wherever they help, like, oh, some kind of ships and stuff open to them. It doesn't sell, but it comes back to us. It tends to be more costly, like moving it back to, using man hours and so forth and so on. A lot of them, which is basically discarded, will end up taking, you know, trashing for metal or whatever.
Any other questions?
Just a expenditure report. Any questions on that? I mean, this is, we are starting to, our dental funds are starting to be reused, which is, as we get to the end of the year, is, is a set perfectly by the, of any other course and demand accounts. So some of the maintenance packages, you know, as we've been pushing more, the projects are a little bit overextended, but we have those covered.
I was gonna say the replacement of equipment, mine stands out there. That's a, okay.
That's a problem.
Thank you, Rob. And then we'll move on to other questions.
Thank you. The first item I have for you tonight is to ask for your vote to reaffirm a policy that we have. It's policy JJIF. I attached it. It is the athletic concussion policy. It's a mandated policy. And it requires a reaffirmation by the school committee every two years. So I've given you the motion there and I've given you a copy of the policy. And I would just ask for your motion for that, to reaffirm that.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm policy JJIF in order to comply with the requirements of the next general.
Take a second.
Second.
So I'm sure nothing's changed. It's just a matter of
Nothing's changed. Yes.
I'll be just note.
We will note that on the policy itself, yes.
Any other question? All in favor?
Oh, thank you very much. I wanted to let you know that the day on the hill for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees is on April 25th, 2018 this year. Unlike other years, it's gonna be held at the Grand Lodge of Masons on Tremont Street in Boston. Usually it's at the State House. I don't know why they're not coming there. Oh, that's right. The theme of this year's day is education reform. And they kind of were making a joke. They said, you know, the next twenty-five years, and then they crossed out years and said months because that's sort of how things are progressing right now. We're on a schedule timeline. We're considering some things about education funding in Massachusetts. The day runs from eight thirty until eleven. And then there's lunch with legislators. There's the luncheon. And then you can arrange to see a legislator in the afternoon. Mrs. Green and I have talked a couple times. It's a nice day. If anybody's interested, just get in touch with me and we'll, we'll sign you up to go. The parking's pretty easy. You can park in the garage under the public gardens and you're right there next to a venue. So it's a nice day. The other thing I wanted to announce is that the, our budget subcommittee and build budget and capital planning subcommittee are going to meet with the FISP group of the town, which is the Facilities Implementation Strategic Planning Group. We're gonna meet with them to begin discussions of our long-term facility needs in the town. That meeting is gonna be on May. So you'll, you'll get an update on that when we come to the next meeting here. The budget subcommittee and I did meet with the finance committee on April 3rd. We gave them all of our documents, the documentation of the budget that was presented in the public hearing. They were, they knew that it was a first draft and they were aware at the time of the discussions that the town manager and I were having regarding any adjustments we might need to make. And so we have made those adjustments to the budget. And that's what you voted tonight. It was an overall very positive, maybe I would say. I wanted to talk to you about something that was on the strategic plan, that was on my goals for this year, that is not reasonable to do at this point. I've been informed. But we were, we had planned to develop and put forward a statement of interest from the town, from the school committee and from the selectmen for their, the Massachusetts School Building Association's core building program. And in working with them and talking to representatives, they actually say you shouldn't submit the statement of interest until your town is ready to move forward with a major renovation or a building project. So what I've been doing, instead of submitting it, is just getting all the documents ready for the time when we will submit it. So we're not going to submit this year because we don't have any agreement with anybody to do any work. So it's not a reasonable time to submit it. That, that program, the core building program, is the, is the program you would apply to for any renovations or significant repair work or any new school construction. I wanted to, I had put in the information for you from Representative Hannah Kane of Shrewsbury, just to see if that got put over already.
I think that's all I have.
Any other questions, Dr. Schapp? Any school committee reports?
No.
Sure? More than that? Then I will take a motion to adjourn. Take a second. Next. All those in favor?
Aye.